Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a special called meeting on Thursday, December 10, 2015, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Constructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters newly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government The purpose of this special called meeting is to administer the oath of office to our newly elected trustees and to reorganize the Board of Trustees. You waiting on me? The Superintendent Secretary will administer the oath of office to the newly elected trustees. There you go. That'll be Donna Boyer. Let's give her a hand, everybody. She wants some recognition. Come on. Yeah, you do.
Y'all can stand in front of me. Y'all are standing so far back. Okay, your response will be "I do."
Hey, wait a second. If you're a family member and you want to move over and get some photos and stuff, go ahead and get up. Or a friend, you don't have to take them from way back where you are. Except for Leslie, if you could just stay seated, Leslie Martone. Appreciate that. Go ahead, Leslie. Or a stranger, that's all right. Creeper. All right. Donna, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt. This is my last meeting, though. I do what I want.
Okay, so please raise your right hand. Do Thomas Jackson, Christine Hartley, Darcy Mungoya, and Debbie Blackshire solemnly swear to faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District and of the State of Texas and will to the best of your ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State of Texas. So help you God. Respond "I do."
I do.
By the authority vested in me as a notary public for the State of Texas, I declare you a duly sworn officer of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent Board of Trustees. Congratulations.
I thought it was a teen, though.
I think the principals heard that you're...
I think by the time y'all sit down, it'll already be tweeted.
I'm scared.
Your picture.
I'm doing it right now.
It's going nationally. You're tweeting right now?
Aye.
First off, congratulations to all of you. I know Tom and Christine, y'all had a tough race. And Debbie, welcome to the Board. We are thrilled to have you. For those of you that don't know, Debbie actually made a mean, extremely mean, key lime pie and the cheesecake, whatever it was. And Mr. Kobe was licking his plate when I went in for dinner. Awkward. It's awkward. It's the third one. But she, I told Mark, I said, "She set the bar kind of high because we better have some baked goods every meeting now."
Wow, I agree.
We will now move on to the business of reorganizing the Board. In accordance with Board Policy BDAA Local, the Board will reorganize by electing a president, vice president, and secretary. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.071. Do any Board members want to go into closed session before we move forward? No? Okay. The election of officers for the 2015-16 Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees shall begin. In accordance with Texas Education Code 11.061(c) and Board Policy BDAA Local, nominations shall be accepted for the offices of President, Vice President, and Secretary. The offices will be elected in that order. I will serve as Chair until a President is elected. At that time, the newly elected President shall preside over the election of the offices of Vice President and Secretary. Once each office is announced and the floor has been open for nominations, any Board member may place a name and nomination without being recognized. No second is required. After determining that no further names are to be placed in nominations, the Chair, that would be me, will declare the nominations closed. Each nominee will be voted upon in the order that name was placed in nomination. All in favor will be asked to signify by raising their right hand. If a majority of those present in voting is achieved, no further votes for the office will be taken. If no majority is achieved, the next name placed in nomination shall be voted upon, and so on, until the office is filled. Before we begin, are there any questions about the procedure? The floor is now open for the Office of President of the Board of Trustees. Christine?
Thank you. Thank you, Don. And I'd like to say my Board comments for Monday night as to why I won't be pursuing an office this year, but because I know how much time it takes, I know what's going on in my life. I think somebody has demonstrated a lot of time and to this job, and I'd like to nominate Tom Jackson as President.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Christine, thank you for placing my name in nomination. Mr. President or Mr. Chairman, I will withdraw my name. The last two years have been extraordinarily arduous, and I could use the next two years as just being a regular trustee. I appreciate the nomination and the nod of approval, but I will withdraw my name. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now, are there any other nominations? John?
Mr. President, I place a nomination for President Darcy Mungoya.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. I think we have a vote out in the audience already?
Yeah.
That's awesome. All in favor of Darcy Mungoya signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. We have a majority, and Darcy Mungoya is elected President. Been waiting to do this for quite a while.
I have too.
My reign of terror is over. I heard you. You gonna go right?
There.
There.
All right, we'll continue with the election of Vice President. The floor is now open for Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
President Mungoya, I'd like to nominate John Ogletree for Vice President.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, it's time for a vote. All those that agree with John Ogletree as Vice President, please raise your right Unanimous. That's also unanimous. All right. So that means that we have a President and Vice President. We go on to Secretary. Are there any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Bob Covey.
Any other nominations? Without any further nominations, the nominations are closed. All those that agree with Bob Covey as Secretary, please raise your right hand. Also unanimous. I think we have our officers.
I forgot that.
Okay. That's because you didn't want to pronounce those names, right?
No, I got it. And then the CLC and Leslie Martone. C.L. Martone.
All right, we need to catch up on a couple of things. We have the Cyfair High School students on our video cameras. Jose Mihá, would you raise your hand? And Alex Greby. Thank you very much for coming. And their advisor is Kevin Corkin at Cyfair. We also have a number of CLC members in the audience. I saw Leslie Martone, Chuck Brandman, Cameron Dickey. Who else is here?
Rick Grothius.
What's your last name?
Grothius.
Rick Grothius. I should have known that, I'm sorry. And also, we want to acknowledge that Leslie is here from the Chamber of Commerce, Leslie Martone. Thank you all for attending. All right, we do have, we do have to also consider an agenda item to use existing facsimile signatures on all checks until the new plates will be arriving for the 2015-16 officers. Says Stuart is the presenter, but I don't think there's a presentation, is there? No.
I'm sorry.
Madam President, I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartley. Any discussion? All those, all those that agree with the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous again. There is no further business for this special called meeting, so we're adjourned in this special called meeting, and we'll reconvene the committee of the whole meeting in just a few moments. Do we have a closed session tonight? So we can go right to the regular meeting?
I think we want to take just a moment to take some pictures.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, we need to coordinate.
Okay. All right, we'll be back in just a few moments. We're going to call the meeting back to order, please. I bet you all remember the beginning part where we told you all about the district and everything, so we're going to skip that part and go on to reports. And we have several oral reports and some written reports for this meeting. The administration worked at Agenda Item 4A. The administration will provide an oral report on two summer programs, the Primary Literacy Camp and the Algebra Camp. The presenters are Linda Macias, Kenya Turner, and Barbara Lewandowski.
Good evening. President Mungoya, trustees, and Dr. Henry. This evening, we will be sharing with you a report on the 2015 Algebra Camp and Camp Summit. You may recall that these are two initiatives that are geared towards eliminating the achievement gap, an early literacy initiative and a math initiative. And that these two initiatives began as ideas proposed by Dr. Henry and then developed jointly by a team of campus administrators and curriculum staff. In our presentation this evening, we will share the data from these two initiatives as well as provide you with a follow-up on the 2014 cohort. Kenya Turner, Director for High School Curriculum and Instruction, and Barbara Lewandowski, Director for Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, will continue with the presentation. At the conclusion of both presentations, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Kenya?
Dr. Henry, President Mungoya, Board of Trustees, and Associate Superintendents. It is an honor to stand before you this evening to give an update on Algebra Camp and its growth of students. The camp is designed to engage fragile math students, as we know algebra is the key to getting more students through high school and beyond. The Algebra Camp Committee wanted students to be able to connect math to real-world careers and experiences. Our middle schools recruited and registered students for the camp, which was held July 15 through the 30th, and hosted by three campuses, Cyfair, Jersey Village, and CySprings. Any eighth grader who failed the math benchmark was invited to participate in order to set a firm foundation for success in Algebra I in the ninth grade. These are our most at-risk students, as 47% of CFISD students take algebra in the eighth grade, with a 99% passing rate for the end-of-course exam. The camp consisted of three four-day units centered around career and technical education themes, industrial technology, robotics, and digital multimedia. The camp was structured to enhance student awareness and interest in math by participating in CTE activities that show how math, excuse me, show how mathematics is relevant and connects to everyday life. Using this structure, students gained a better understanding of critical math concepts and increased confidence in their math capabilities with an "I can do this" attitude. Each day included a large group quantum learning session, three math sessions, and either a club rewind, CTE, or small group quantum learning session. There were small class sizes of eight to 12 to maximize benefit and allow for smaller group instruction. Quantum learning focuses on character building, self-esteem, and problem solving, and club rewind focuses on team-building skills, all of which students need to be successful in and out of the classroom. Each high school campus donated prizes for students such as t-shirts, cups, and lanyards. This was done in an effort to connect the students to their high school. Students were entered into drawings based on participation and attendance each day. The prizes, incentives, and energetic teaching kept the kids coming back. A special thank you to Leslie Francis and the Department of Community Relations for securing all of the student and teacher incentives from our business partners. Again, the students invited to Algebra Camp are our most at-risk and were identified as not being ready for algebra at the end of their eighth-grade year. 66% of our 2014 camp attendees passed the Algebra I EOC, and 81% of those students earned credit for the Algebra I course in the spring of 2015. The directors from 2014 had students running up to them excited that they had passed the Algebra EOC. The relationships made with the students made them accountable to someone at their new school, which kept them in class more and they were better prepared. We will continue to track the success of both the 2014 and 2015 cohorts of students. At this time, I would like to recognize the camp directors, Yolanda Sneed, Michelle Provo, and Colette Valet, who at this time would like to present you with a gift to thank you for all of your support of this wonderful program.
Dr. Henry, President Mungoya, Board of Trustees and Associates, thank you for the opportunity to share our summer literacy initiative called Camp Summit with you. Our primary coordinator, Letitia Bard, and her team, along with feedback from our principal committee, created the curriculum for Camp Summit. Students in kindergarten, first, and second grade who are reading below level from all 54 elementary campuses were invited. To plan for the number of students, we used the third nine weeks reading level data. Camp Summit ran from June 15 to July 23 at nine elementary campuses. The students attended from 8:30 to 2:00 and received free breakfast, lunch, and transportation. Once again, club rewind provided before and after-school services. The goals of Camp Summit were to improve the reading level of students and to avoid summer reading regression known as the summer slide. The curriculum team structured the day around three components, which included small group literacy, phonics instruction, and enrichment. Once again, we used animals from the SRC during the enrichment time and continued to use incentives to increase attendance and motivation. Our nine Camp Summit principals stand as I call your name. Angela Aiken-Fonville, Kimberly Criswell, Adrian Davis, Andy Limkey, Michael Pagano, Kevin Sullivan, Molly Swanson, Sharon Whitfield, and Jessica Woods ensure the curriculum was carried out and the students were engaged. I would like to begin by sharing the data we have compiled regarding Camp Summit. Approximately 2,200 students attended. We wanted to share the demographic breakdown. As you can see, all student population groups were represented at the camp. As we continue to look at the data, we wanted to see how many students attended the majority of the camp. 88% attended five weeks or more. Once again, we want to thank CyHope for the donation of two bikes at each campus. The bikes help. When looking at the progress these students made, as well as our goal of preventing the summer slide, 68% of the students gained one or more levels, 19% stayed the same. Therefore, 87% of the students, based on the data from that third nine weeks until the beginning of this school year's assessment data, made growth or avoided the summer slide. Research indicates if we don't stop the summer slide, by the time the student is in fifth grade, he or she could be two and a half to three years behind. We also want to take this time to share data from the first cohort of campers from the summer of 2014. We began by looking at the approximately 2,400 students to see how many of the students were promoted, placed, or retained in June of 2015, one year later. 93% of those students were promoted or placed into the next grade level, and 7% were retained. We wanted to continue to look at the students from the first cohort and see how the group of second graders who moved on to third grade achieved on the third-grade reading STAR test in April. Of the 810 students tested, 63% met standard or were within three questions of meeting standard. One special note is that 2% of these students scored advanced on the STAR. That's great. We realize the importance of Camp Summit in supporting these students so they have a firm foundation in literacy, and that foundation continues to have an impact each school year. We will continue to monitor both cohorts during this school year to ensure the students continue their progress in reading. After sharing data with the principals and assistant principals, one principal said that the students who attended Camp Summit came back more confident readers. An assistant principal shared that every student that attended from her campus has made significant progress, allowing those students to start the year with the gap closed in reading levels. With your support, our students will continue to see success, and we will prevent the summer slide and eliminate the achievement gap. To show our thanks, our Camp Summit principals have a special gift for you. Last year, there was a question about carabiners. So we wanted to give you your own carabiner. I think that was Don Ryan. And the students used these to collect their tokens. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Feel free to try them out.
That concludes our presentation on Camp Summit and the Algebra Camp. If there are any questions, we will be happy to answer them.
I just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Christine. In visiting both of these, I just have to commend everybody that participated in this project. And what I will say is I saw absolutely total involvement in the high school level, which I think when you deal with teenagers, sometimes you're not always getting a full focus on what they're supposed to be doing, and so that was very impressed. And then going into the Camp Summit and seeing, I think I went to three different elementary schools, it was just, it was amazing. And one of the things that I noticed was, and I heard from teachers, were that they were able to learn, and they got so involved in it, too. Some of the teachers were teaching topics that they had never taught before, and they really got into that. I believe it was a math teacher I was talking with said she was teaching reading, and all of a sudden, it came to her how much she could do in math with reading, and I thought that was pretty impressive, too. And then I also heard from teachers this time saying how well-planned y'all had this thing set up for them, and it was just a joy to go to every day. So, thank you for doing that. I'm tickled about the kids. I'm looking forward to seeing even more improvement. Appreciate it.
Mr. Covey, one of the things that I think makes the camp so successful is that we truly do hire the best teachers with the support of our principals. And that was actually Dr. Henry's vision, that we try and pull the very best teachers to teach our kids. So that's who we hire. And we've had such a success with them that the principals are asking us if we can add one additional component to the camps this next year, and that is to allow the brand-new hires to shadow the teachers during Camp Summit, because it's such great professional development. So we're going to look at adding that to it.
Yes, my question was going to be about how we see this growing, what are kind of our projected numbers. Beyond the data and the numbers, you're teaching kids that they can do it. And dealing with other children that I know who didn't pass that STAR, didn't pass that STAR, and just how defeated they feel, and just coming to one of these camps, they leave, they start that school year, "I can do this. I've got this." And I just think that's such a huge component of it, just even on top of the numbers. So I would love for even more students to be able to experience it. So I was just curious about.
Well, our goal certainly is to continue these two programs this next year. Our challenge is going to be that, or that we're going to really try to work with, is that we get more of the kids that we invite. Because we certainly invite more students than actually came to Camp Summit. You know, their parents have plans already, but that's our goal, to start advertising it a little bit earlier and to do more outreach, some more calling, so that we get more of the kids that were invited to actually attend.
Super. Super, thank you. Dr. Ogletree?
Thank you. I want to just commend Dr. Henry. Two years ago, at one of the national conferences, I saw the presentation on what the regression that takes place in minority and low-income children during the summer. And we just want to commend you and others for initiating this, to fill that gap. And Linda, that was the question I was going to ask you. Obviously, we need more of the children to take advantage of this, and wanted to know just what initiatives, how early are you going to start? Because this is all free, isn't it?
That is correct.
And to get more and more of our kids. And also, what will we do to improve? I know you've got it under your belt there, but what are you going to do to even make this better?
We, right now, we have about somewhere between 73% and 75% of the students that we invite that are actually attending. I think it was 73, something like that, 73% this year, 75% the year before. And so, as I shared, our goal is to get that number a lot higher. We have a committee, Dr. O, Camp Summit and Algebra Camp Committee, and that includes principals and also our district staff. And that committee is convening and starting to brainstorm about what we can do to get the word out and to have a higher percent of our students participating. As far as what we're going to do to make it even better, we're already thinking about that as well. In fact, we're looking at some different programs that we can add to it. We just actually researched one this past week at a seminar that we attended. And so, they've actually agreed to allow us to pilot the program that they have. It's called Smarty Ants. It's called Smarty Ants. And it's fairly new, but it's got a lot of potential. So I've asked them if they would let us pilot it free here in our district for our... That's a really good sample for research for a company. So they're going to, they've agreed to allow us to pilot this program for us, and we think coupled with what we're already doing, it's going to make even a bigger impact.
Any other Board comments?
I, like Bob, toured both, and I would like to say thank you for all the time that you gave me and squiring me around so I wouldn't get lost going to the campuses. Linda, every district has a program similar to this, but this program is remarkably different in several ways from what is the standard offered at other districts. Can you highlight just a couple of those?
One of the things that is quite different is that there are other districts that have them, but they might serve a certain population of the district, like, for example, maybe just their kids that attend Title I schools. Well, we... Well, we know that at every single one of our schools, we have kids who struggle with reading. And by providing the local funds that we did for this program, we're able to offer to any student throughout this entire district who is needing support in reading or in math. So that's a huge difference.
And Dr. Henry, I think that goes to the heart of what this district is all about. It's every student, every day, not just special populations. A follow-up question, we were talking about Camp Algebra, and this is one of my favorite questions to ask every year, and I haven't asked it this time. We talked about the participation rate in Algebra I at the eighth grade level, but we did not make the comparison to the state. So the comment you made is we had a forty-seven percent participation rate for Algebra I in eighth grade. How does that compare roughly to what the participation rate is across the state?
I believe at the state level, twenty-three. Yeah, yeah. So about twenty-three percent is at the state level of eighth graders who take Algebra I. Well, we're at forty percent. We're about double what the state takers are. And I just have to add that the passing rate is extremely high. Ninety-nine percent of our kids are actually successful with it.
And then also, my standard question from each of the last three years. When I first asked this question, as to whether or not we had software that was capable of tracking on an individual student basis, we weren't there yet. So are we able to track with software, or do we have to do it manually and follow up for the students? Because we have a large number of students we're trying to track.
We are able to track in E-School Plus the data, and actually, that's how we were able to get a lot of the data for the cohorts. Because we thought it was important to see. We offered to this group, this is a new group, we offered another one in 2014, what kind of impact has it made even after the camps?
And I would like to say thank you for following up on that. That was a specific board request to track the efficacy of these programs. They obviously sound very good, but the numbers don't lie. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Dr. Henry, did you want to say something?
Just very quickly, and again, it's already been said, but Lyndon, Kenyon, Barbara, thank you for your leadership. It's so great, the superintendent in a district where you might have an idea but not exactly sure how to make it come alive and to be able to turn it over to such wonderful, creative, and intelligent people to make that happen for our students and principals that serve in the summer. Thank you for your dedication and the passion and the concern you have for all of our students. And even going to our financial department with Stuart and Karen and those folks, when we come in the middle of the year with an idea like this and say, you know, it's going to cost a couple of million dollars, but we think it's going to pay off. And Stuart's always so receptive about helping us find the funds to do something of this nature. And then Christina Perez and Club Rewind, she helps make it even more fun for the students, which gets them there, that makes a big difference. But the number-one thank you I want to give, and you've already shown two or three times this board meeting why this is the Texas School Board of the Year. The leadership you have, the maturity you have, the foresight you have to do what's best for this community and for these students. And I'm just always so impressed with all of you here. And of course, Debbie's new to the board, but I've been impressed with Debbie for four and a half years that I've known her. And you know, on behalf of all the staff, we appreciate you so much for letting us try things, and sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. But thank you for letting us to stretch a little bit and try things. And there's no doubt that you've demonstrated this evening why you are the Texas School Board of the Year. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. That'll take us to item 4B. In accordance with the Texas Education Code and the State Board of Education Regulations, the president of the board shall announce the name of each board member who has completed, exceeded, or is deficient in the continuing education requirement under state law. There are three components to this. All board members have completed the mandatory team building. All board members have completed the legislative update. And as far as the continuing education credit, Bob Covey has exceeded, Christine Hartley is deficit, Kevin Hoffman is deficit, Tom Jackson has exceeded, Darcy Mungoya is exceeded, John Ogletree has completed, Don Ryan is exceeded. Any questions? 4C, the administration will provide a written report on the end-of-year academic performance and literacy assessment of elementary students in grades K through 2 for the 2014-15 year. This is a written report. So all we're going to do is ask questions, if anybody would like to ask questions. Mr. Jackson?
I really don't have any original questions. My first year on the board, I think I asked all of them. So this is merely a repeat of the questions that I've asked before. When you take a look at the numbers, there are certain anomalies as you go from kindergarten to first and second. If you would, please comment on the anomalies. Secondly, when I take a look at the overall passing rate, is that higher or lower than it was last year? And do we have a reason, other than serendipity, for that to have occurred? And then, third, it appears that we have a trend on the passing rates of our lowest-performing campuses. And would you comment on what that trend appears to be, and also if we happen to have a reason for it or not? Or maybe our blueberries are just a little bluer.
Yes, I do agree that there are a few anomalies in the data, and we've gone back to do some research as to why that has happened. And there are several reasons why that may be. This is a state-required assessment for K through second grade, and there are different instruments that you can choose on the state-required list. But there's very few that are actually technology-based, and this is one of those. So it could be the technology, it could be that our campuses are able to be able to do it, it's called an on-demand test, or when they see that the scores don't quite make sense, they can go back and reassess kids. It could be that that was also the case as well, that that didn't happen. But we are continuing to look at this, and we're also evaluating the current tool that we use and looking at, are there any other options? Your question regarding, well, the reason for why the scores have gone up, we did make an effort to focus on second grade and to see what it was that was causing our scores to be a little lower. We looked at the alignment of the curriculum from first to second, and we tweaked that some to make sure that it was a clear alignment. We've done a lot of professional development for our second-grade teachers. And the scores, I think even per campus, or fewer campuses that have lower scores, and then overall, the scores went up two percent. So incremental growth for our second grade, and we'll continue focusing on that growth for them. The schools that you see where the scores are still a little lower, those are really schools that we have on our, we have a monitored support system. And so, where our curriculum team, and it's not just curriculum team, actually, it's the curriculum team, it's student services, special ed, bilingual, there's a district team that is actually out at these campuses every three weeks, supporting them, looking at their data, providing suggestions, visiting the classrooms, to make sure that we are providing as much support as we can for these campuses.
A follow-up question, if I may. Do we have correlation, do we know what the correlation is, between, say, the second-grade test and that all-important third-grade reading-literacy test, or is that still a little elusive?
It is still a little elusive. It's, I can't tell you that we have concrete data for that. But we do continue to monitor, as we do with Camp Summit, how are kids who are in second grade and how they perform in second grade, and then how they did in third grade. But we've got to do a better job of collecting that data.
Thank you.
No other questions? That concludes our reports, and we'll go to our action items. The following items may be considered at both the committee of the whole meeting and the regular board meeting. The board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. For arts and miscellaneous school supplies, audiovisual and theatrical equipment and supplies, automotive chemicals, parts and supplies, central packaging for food service, cleaning supplies for food service, Cyfair High School band uniforms, electric service, bucket and lift truck service, family and consumer science equipment and supplies, health science equipment and supplies, office supplies, paper for food service, pipe and wire, printer supplies, processed produce, satellite cold storage for food service, smallwares for food service, telephone data and video cabling and repair services, TVs and mounts, and whole produce. May that stay on consent with everyone? The board will consider approving the attached list of students for off-campus...
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Mr. Jackson?
I do have a question on the satellite cold storage for food service. However, I will ask that on Monday. So is it your preference that we move it to the non-consent agenda, or do you prefer for me to ask on Monday for the item to be moved off of the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda, so I may ask my question?
Well, it's my understanding that if we're going to have questions on the consent agenda item, that it does need to be off the consent agenda.
Correct, and I'm merely asking what's your preference, to move it off tonight or move it on Monday?
Tonight? Yeah, just we'll keep it off non-consent.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move that to non-consent. All right. Item B, the board will consider approving the attached list of students for off-campus physical education category one for the 2015-16 school year spring. Any questions on this topic? May that stay on consent. All right. Item 5C, the board will consider approving the tax refunds for $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Any questions on this topic? It'll stay on consent, then. The board will consider approving the minutes of the November 9, 2015, regular meeting. Any questions? It'll stay on consent. E, the board will consider approving the minutes of the November 16, 2015, special call meeting. Any questions? Stay on consent. That brings us to our action items non-consensus. The board will consider a resolution authorizing use of eminent domain to condemn easements located on the district's 127.8 acre Bridgeland site. Questions?
Would you all like just a brief explanation about that?
I think that would be good.
It's fairly self-explanatory, but Roy Sprague will jump in on any specific questions about the site. But when we acquired the site from Bridgeland, they were still trying to clear up a few old access easements from old oil and gas leases. There's no oil and gas lease anywhere on our site, but there are remnants of old access easements still remaining. And those of you, you know, we live in Texas, so you're very familiar with this. Bridgeland was unable to track down all of the owners, because you know, the parts of interests and things. And so, we are doing this somewhat in conjunction with Bridgeland to clear title. The access roads are not in use, nobody uses them, they don't go anywhere. But it is a technical legal thing, it's the kind of stuff that we lawyers, you know, kind of find interesting and no one else does. But, you know, so it's an academic exercise somewhat. We will declare, get the power from you to condemn it. We will find the percentage interest owners and their percentage interest in just the surface, the ability to use that access road, which, since there's nothing there, they wouldn't have a need to use it. But we need to technically and legally remove that, just so that we have clear title. And I don't know that we'll actually end up having to exercise condemnation. We may have to do it for any interest owners that we can't find. We may have to do a notice by publication, tender the, you know, small percentage of interest in that access road easement, and leave it in the registry of the court, and hopefully, if they ever surface, they will get it. But we're coming to you now because the law requires some very specific steps, specific resolution, and those types of things. Because in a traditional condemnation case, it's obviously much, much different. But this is just a right-of-access easement to a drill site that doesn't exist.
Does anyone have any questions on that item? Would we prefer that to be on consent or non-consent?
Consent.
Consent? We'll move that to consent, then. The board will consider approving this, this is 6B, the board will consider approving the CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC blanket utility easement to provide electrical service for the new natatorium. Do we need a closed session on this? Is there any presentation on this? Any board questions on this? Can this be moved to consent? We will do that. That ends our action items for board discussion. The board will review options for establishing attendance boundaries for Cypress Park High School and High School Number 12, opening in the 2016-17 and 2017-18 school years, respectively. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, President Mungoya, board members. We've got a whole group of people that are going to bring you up to date on where we were or where we've come since last time related to boundary options. And what we did was, we kind of went back and kind of re-looked at the situation and thought about, okay, why do we do what we do? And as we got to talking about it, the primary process that we have, the reason we do it is because we've always done it that way. So we decided to take a good look at it, and we've had committee meetings about it, and just take a different look. And so, this evening, based on community feedback, based on my conversations with other fast-growth school districts and how they open high schools, based on my conversations with the UIL and some of the implications with UIL, we're going to give a couple of options today as we address boundary change options. And what we really tried to base these on was, let's remove adults from the situation. Let's not worry about adults at all. Let's focus only on students. And if we focus only on students, what would we come up with? So as I said, we're going to kind of roll two options out for you today, for you to take a look at. As I said earlier, we have numerous presenters, and at the conclusion, we feel like you will have a better understanding of the alternative proposal that we're going to present today. Teresa's going to kick it off with a kind of a general explanation, but we also are going to hear from athletics, academics, fine arts, and student services. And we're going to kind of talk to you about the pros and cons of the options that we're presenting to you this evening. And at the conclusion of that, we'll have Kristi Geron, who will actually come up and talk to you about boundary line-specific. But hopefully, you will see from the citizen comments and some of the concerns that have been there, that maybe this second option will be something that will be of interest to you as a Board of Trustees. And Teresa, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about the details, and like I said, it's going to get pretty involved.
It is. But what, as Dr. Henry mentioned, really since we rolled this out publicly into you on November 16, we've been receiving all of the input from the community, and we've provided all that information to date to you for review as well. And, you know, we just saw some common threads with some of the concerns that were expressed in the community, and it really did cause us to step back and look at our current practice of opening schools and then the students. And we're going to be focusing on high school specifically. The concerns, if, I'm going to go to this right here, the concerns really centered around our practice of moving ninth and 10th graders to... The concerns really centered around our practice of moving ninth and 10th graders to open a campus. And so right here on option one, our current practice is to open Cypress Park and High School 12 in this situation with ninth and 10th graders. That means that any current eighth grader and current ninth grader would be required to move to those new schools. In the case of Cypress Park and High School 12, any eighth grader in 2016-17 and any ninth grader in 2016-17 would be required to move to open that campus in 17-18. So any ninth and 10th grader and all of those other boundary changes that we rolled out for you last month, all of those other campuses that are impacted that we're trying to relieve enrollment for, we also, our practice has been to require those ninth and 10th graders to move as well. So what we started looking at is, you know, why do we open campuses with ninth and 10th? And why do we require those ninth and 10th graders to move? So we started thinking about creating an option. And I want to, I know you're going to generate a lot of questions as I explain this option to you. But I would ask for you just to hold on to your questions and write them down. Because I really do think, as I ask the other presenters to come up and explain their areas, you're going to see a reason for the differences. And they're going to roll out and talk to you about what it looks like with option one and what it would look like with option two. What we started considering with Cypress Park is to open it with ninth grade only. And that is due to the UIL realignment year. 2016-17 for UIL is a realignment year. And Raisa Peta and Ed Workin are here tonight, and they're going to come up and explain that process to you. And that's the reason High School 12, which is scheduled to open in 2017-18, we would say, because of some of those realignment issues, that we would consider opening High School 12 with ninth and 10th grade. For the all other current campuses that would not be affected by that UIL realignment, we would suggest in this option that only incoming ninth graders. So in 2016-17, that would mean our current eighth graders. Only kids that have never stepped foot on a high school campus would be required to move to their new school on the scheduled attendance zone. Now, in 2017-18 with High School 12, that would mean, though, those ninth graders in 2016-17 would have to move to High School 12. That's the exception. That's probably as clear as mud at this moment in time. But I think as the other presenters come up, I don't want to get in detail, because I think you'll start to understand why there's a difference between Park and High School 12. Okay? So our next presenter's going to be Ed Workin and Raisa Peta, and they're going to talk about the UIL realignment issue.
Thank you. President Mungoya, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. I'm here to explain the athletic and UIL realignment process as it impacts with the opening of Cypress Park and High School 12. The UIL process is that every two years, University Interscholastically utilizes the current enrollment to reclassify and realign our member schools. They take a snapshot. We took a snapshot of our enrollment this October. And that's where you take the snapshot. You send it to the UIL. The UIL looks at all, not just our schools, everybody's schools. And then they put them into a classification. We are, in 17-6A, we're in the highest classification due to our enrollment. And they just released a cutoff number of 2150. So all of our schools that are over 2150 were in 6A. The realignment and reclassification process, I'm sorry, I shouldn't move this forward. The realignment and reclassification process occurs in even years. Thus, this February, February 1st, 2016, the UIL will submit their realignment in where our schools are. And at that point, we will compete in athletics and academics in 2016, 2017, and then 2017 and 2018. The reason for this two-year rotation is really about football. Football, you have to play one year away or home and reciprocate. There are financial implications on that, as you can imagine. But anyway, the reason is that two-year. And then they check enrollment again, because fast-growing districts can move up, or there could be some that move down, which you might have seen in the papers. The important part is student eligibility for varsity contests is not impacted when the school district changes boundaries or facilitates the opening of two new schools, provided the student attends that original school or that new school that they are zoned to. If you look at the next slide and you take the two columns as this next realignment, Cy Parks opens in 2016, and they'll compete in that process in the 2016 realignment. And also, in the 2017 and 18 school year, High School 12 will open up, and they'll compete in that process. Now, 2018 and 19, when we do the snapshot of enrollment in October of 2018, that's the October of the 2017-18 school year. When we take that snapshot, we're including also the two other schools. Now, we're starting to go down uncharted waters here, because there's a cap on 10 schools in a UIL district. So at that point is where the UIL will assign us into two different districts and split our Cyfair ISD into two different UIL districts. I'm sure there'll be other school districts involved with us. Not our decision at this point. It's a UIL decision. But that kind of sets the, that we're going down uncharted waters here, and things need to be considered differently at times. Raisa Peta, the Associate Athletic Director in our department, will explain the impact on team sports. Team sports like volleyball, football, basketball, soccer, baseball, softball, and the individual sports. Those are cross-country, tennis, golf, track and field, swimming, wrestling. Those are individual sports. And how we will actually develop an athletic schedule for those different teams.
Okay, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And hopefully, I won't muddy the waters here. I know I'm a visual person, and so I'm going to, you know, trying to understand this and explain this to you. I'm an old biology teacher. I work best with charts. And so I've got a chart for you tonight. And I think it might be helpful to look at this process over the years, year by year. And we're going to start with option one, which was the option that you were presented in our original session when we talked about the boundary process. And looking just at Cypress Park High School right now and option one, what this would look like. And this is the model that you've used in the past, opening up a high school with grades nine and 10. And this is the same model that any high school would utilize across the state of Texas due to the UIL process and the realignment process that Mr. Workin described for you. As he mentioned, we're going to be entering a new year of competition under the alignment process that's going to be happening here in February. So Cypress Park would open up, as you can see on that chart, with grades nine and 10 in the 2016-17 school years. As such, as you're only having freshmen and sophomores, it's probably from a safety situation and also from a competitive situation. You really cannot compete at a varsity level in team sports. So for all team sports, with those two grade levels, they would compete on the subvarsity level. How we would come up with a schedule with that, being as we're already full, is we would basically have to pull games from our existing members. We have done that and kind of drafted schedules for volleyball and football, have met with all of our staffs at this point. And they're very pleased with the initial schedules that we've drawn up and feel like it's fair to the 10, but also beneficial to the two that we're opening up the next couple of years. So we feel like we have a solid plan moving forward if we proceed in this manner. The individual sports, that's been a question. Everybody kind of seems to understand the team sports and why it's probably not wise to compete at the varsity level and why no one does that across the state of Texas when you open up a school with two grade levels. But for an individual sport, there are times when we have freshmen and sophomores that are very capable of competing against older students. And if their ability dictates that they could be competitive, then they would compete right alongside our other 10 schools in District 17-6A for UIL advancement. So for example, cross-country, first individual sport, you know, off the bat. If I was fast enough, I would compete at the varsity cross-country meet as a freshman. So Cy Parks students that were capable would compete and having a chance to compete at the varsity level for those individual sports. So that would be kind of the 2016-17 school year. Team sports, we're competing kind of with our member schools. We're drawing games, subvarsity games for them. There is not a varsity team competition. Individual sports, it's more really about the individual and where their ability level dictates their place. In 2017 and 18, and we've highlighted a couple of areas here in yellow, at that point, Cy Park would be placed in a separate district apart from our 10 member schools. Okay? And they would be doing that for the purpose of competing at that point in all varsity sports with the exception of football. When you're kind of getting placed in the middle of the alignment, as Mr. Workin mentioned, because the alignment is really structured for football and you have reciprocating agreements, you really can't enter a team right in the middle of the alignment, if that makes sense. And I'm going to try to say that again. You know, we're going to be on the front end of that alignment this next school year. We play one game at home. The next year, we're supposed to play away. We cannot enter, even if the kids are physically capable of doing that, the UIL would not allow us to play varsity football in the middle of the alignment. Okay? So for all team sports, we would compete at the varsity level in a district separate and apart from our other 10 member schools. And so what would happen to football then? They would play, again, a subvarsity schedule. And I think that you can pretty much figure out the impact then to the juniors that we would have, is that they would have one year to compete at the varsity football level. And that also impacts not just our varsity football players, but I've seen a lot of you at our contests before. You know as well as I do that a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night varsity football experience involves the band, the drill team, the cheerleaders, our student bodies. There's a lot that goes on with that as far as school culture, et cetera. As far as the individual sports, at that point, they would be competing in their new district. So whatever district the UIL placed that Cy Park in, they would compete with those members in the varsity and also subvarsity levels for that one calendar year. Why would it only be one year? Because we would be back to a realignment year. Okay? And as Ed mentioned, then in 2018-19, we're expecting that both Cy Park and High School 12 would be realigned along with our other 10 member schools in a configuration that we can't really imagine. We can only suggest and cajole and hope. And ultimately, though, that's a UIL decision. Okay? For High School 12 in boundary option one, there's some critical differences from what I just described to you. Because they're entering, they're actually accepting students and opening up in the middle of the realignment process with two grade levels. Now they're back kind of where High School 11 was when they first opened. So again, from the subvarsity level, they would compete against our 10 member schools. We have a way of scheduling those sports. It has taken quite a while. But as I mentioned to you, early results seem to be that our existing schools and coaches are pleased with what we've come up with and the models we've come up with. And again, with the individual sports, they would be competing as they kind of, again, the ability level of the athlete dictates. Again, in 2018-19, they, along with the other 11 schools, would be realigned, as I mentioned. With boundary option two, it really only impacts Cypress Park High School. Okay? And I'm going to kind of stick to just the critical differences here between option one and option two. If we were to bring in Cypress Park with a ninth grade class only in the first year, again, the years, the experience for the athletes would look very much like what their first year would be with ninth graders and 10th graders. There's not a lot of critical differences. We would schedule them against our other 10 member schools. We would utilize the same scheduling methods that I just discussed with you. And we would try to find a way to get their games. Now, the difference being, though, in the second year, they would basically repeat the process. So again, the process would repeat. And if I'm a coach, I have two years there to kind of build my program. And what this does is you can well see, and if I go back to High School 12, is that then puts High School 11, Cypress Park, on par and right even with High School 12 when it opens. And so in the 2017-18 year, they would be kind of competing on a similar track with obviously existing grade levels, ninth and 10th graders. And as I mentioned, then we would be into the new realignment. Now, I do not have a slide for you for High School 12, option two, because that's the same as option one, if that makes sense. Mr. Workin is going to kind of come back up here and talk about maybe some of the pros and cons. Because after we kind of made sense of this by putting it in a chart, again, my biology sensibilities, we then started looking at, well, what are the pros and cons to both of these models?
Uncharted waters, again, we're opening up. We haven't opened up a high school in two different years, back to back. Ranch Lakes together in one year. The pros of option one, that's option one, Cypress Park, ninth and 10th grade. It's consistent with what we've done in the past. We already have a model in place for staffing, budgets, and so on. It would be consistent with how we're going to go in with High School 12. The cons, juniors in 2017-18 would not have the opportunity to play varsity football. That varsity football experience, that's where we have 600 to 800 of our students performing in one venue, as well as another 400 or 500 in the student section. That's what the varsity football experience. The Friday part here is a little different, though, because we're Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Current ninth grader zoned to Cypress Park that might be participating in varsity sports this year would basically would not have that opportunity as a 10th grader. Girls' sports, they play early. If they're good enough, freshmen, their individual sports wouldn't be affected necessarily, but those team sports would. Cypress Park would be placed in a separate competitive district for the 17-18 school year, apart from the Cyfair schools. A bit of a separation. It could be in with Katie. It could be in with Klein. You know, that's, those are the pros and cons of option one. Option two, with going in next year, 2016-17, with Cypress Park as ninth grade. Cypress Park and High School 12 would be 11th graders in the 2018-19, the new realignment at that point, and would participate in all varsity sports, including football. All students involved in the varsity football experience would possibly have two full years to enjoy this process. Ninth graders who are currently participating in varsity sports that are zoned to Cypress Park would be able to stay at their current school and continue participating at their varsity level. We'd be able to stay together as a continuous competitive district until 2018 realignment process. Coaches would have two full years to develop their players and programs at Cypress Park. Would lessen the negative initial impact of Cypress Springs and Cypress Lakes, where those ninth graders would stay there and continue on. Cons, due to the nature of the UIL realignment process, would have to utilize a different process in opening Cypress Park and High School 12, meaning one at ninth, ninth grade campus, and the other, like we have been doing in the past. All team sports would wait two full years to compete at the varsity level. So those are our pros and cons. And academics and fine arts, next.
Good evening, Dr. Henry, President Mungoya, and board members.
Good evening, Dr. Henry, President Mungoya, and Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss with you students' academic, elective, and co-curricular experiences as they would attend the new high school, given the two options that the previous presenters spoke to you about. The students' academic experience would not be affected. We will open the new high school with a full complement of courses. We will take into account the needs of students who may be accelerated in certain content areas, most specifically mathematics and foreign language. We will ensure that students have course choices that align with their endorsement area. We will also avail students of any dual credit or advanced placement courses for which they are eligible. In short, we will offer what they request as they do spring registration. All fine arts programs will be available at the new high school. Mary Running, the Director of Fine Arts, has worked with music staff to standardize the audition criteria for new high school music students. All students already in a fine arts program at another high school are automatically members of the same program at the new high school. Option one provides opportunities for band, choir, and orchestra members to compete in the first year of the new school's existence. They will participate in UIL non-varsity concert and sight-reading events, individual TMEA region activities, and UIL solo and ensemble competitions. The band and drill teams perform at junior varsity football games and compete in invitational contests. Since UIL marching area contest is an every-other-year event, students would only have one opportunity to participate in that competition. Option two provides opportunity for ninth grade music students to compete in individual TMEA region activities and UIL solo and ensemble events. The size and instrumentation, that is, the instruments that the students collectively play, will determine UIL competition opportunities. The students would have two chances to participate in UIL area marching contests. Summer camps, rehearsals, and the like would be held in both instances as similar to any other high school. And of course, students in these groups can letter based on the standard guidelines in the first year of participation. In option one, where we open with ninth and 10th graders at Park, students may letter at a school that he or she would not be attending in 10th grade, so we would be making some provisions for a second letter jacket with a different school. Let's talk about dance a little bit. In option one, students make any dance team this fall or guaranteed a spot on the team at the next high school. Dance fees will not be collected until after students know what school they will be attending next school year. Fees will be paid to next year's drill team. Each high school affected by a boundary change will hold a mini tryout in the spring to provide an additional opportunity for dancers to make the team. Drill team tryouts occur in the fall. So, in option two, where we open with ninth graders, the new high school dance team would not be established until next year in the spring semester. Our ISC staff would work with, to ensure that comparable experiences are in place for those new members by allowing them to collaborate and work with existing dance teams at the other high schools. They like to sister each other. The curriculum and skills learned by new members in the spring, new member class, is standardized across all the high schools to ensure that all members have opportunity and access to learn what they need to succeed as a dancer. Summer camps and rehearsals will be held at all the high schools, and of course, students may letter in their first full year of participation in accord with standard guidelines. In the theater area, theater students at the new high school will compete in UIL one-act play as well as other UIL events, including theatrical design competitions and young filmmakers contests in both options one and two. There is no discernible difference. The campus will submit for charter membership in the International Thesbian Society. Membership earned at any school will transfer with the student moving to any new school. The new theater troupe will compete at the Thesbian, Texas Thesbian Festival and be eligible to qualify for attendance at the National Thesbian Festival. All CTE programs, Career and Technical Education programs, designed for ninth and 10th graders or for ninth graders only, will be available at Cy Park. This includes ag, business, computer science, multimedia, family and consumer science, health science, and all varieties of industrial tech, drafting, and engineering. Once again, as I said earlier, we will match the course request of the students as they register this spring. Advanced CTE courses typically taken by 11th and 12th graders will be available on an as-need basis for either ninth and 10th graders, if that's what they are ready for in select, or for only ninth graders. Again, we will determine this based on the student's spring course registration request. We will ensure that students have available to them all courses needed to meet their endorsement choices. Competition options are the same for students in the Career and Technical Education area. Specifically, ninth and/or 10th graders can compete in livestock, judging, and speaking events, and all students, regardless of the option, would have access to the district Students at a new high school have many and varied leadership and growth opportunities. They have a chance to lead at an early age. They develop the culture and traditions of the school. They have early access to more advanced performing groups, and they utilize new equipment and facilities. Students have many opportunities in the new school, new high school environment that allow them to develop collaborative skills and to acquire leadership attributes and characteristics. They become mature and confident students at a very early age. The new high school experience is a great opportunity that gives students a fast track to leadership, regardless of whether we open with ninth and 10th graders or with ninth graders alone. I thank you for your opportunity to discuss this with you tonight.
President Mungoya, Board of Trustees, Dr. Henry, thank you for the opportunity to share with you student transfers with the, for 2016-17 school year and for High School Number 12. Students that are rezoned, they are currently, excuse me, they're in ninth and 10th grade students, current students, they are in eighth and ninth grade who have been rezoned to a different campus, and that is option one. For option two, oh, I'm sorry, only incoming ninth grade students, and they are currently in grades eight, will be rezoned to the new campus. For a sibling transfer, these are the students in 2016-17 who will be in ninth and 10th grade. They are current students in grades eight and nine who have an older sibling in 11th or 12th grade. They are currently in grades 10 or 11, and they may choose to attend their original high school rather than attend the high school designated by the rezoning, for option one. Option two, ninth grade students, current students in grade eight who have an older sibling in grades 10, 11, and 12, they are currently in grades nine, 10, and 11, may choose to attend their original high school rather than attend the high school designated by the rezoning. Another category is the one-year early transfer. These are regards for ninth grade students, and this is from a four-year high school to a four-year high school. This would be Cy Fair to Cypress Ranch, Cypress Falls to Cypress Ranch, Cypress Woods to Cypress Ranch, and Cypress Ranch to Cy Woods. They would have the opportunity to go one year early if the parent would provide transportation in option one. And in option two, it's not applicable because they're already at the high school. For transportation, since bus transportation is going currently for grades 11 and 12 at that year, they'll be eligible for two years of bus transportation in option one, the 2016-17 school year, along with the 2017-18 school year. In option two, the buses will be going for three years, because those students will be in grades 10, 11, and 12, so they'll have an opportunity for 2016-17, 17-18, and 18-19 for their transportation. The transfer fee is waived, and the deadline pending Board approval for sibling boundary transfer will be April the 6th. When we go to the next slide for High School Number 12, this is for the 2017-18 school year. As you've heard previously tonight, these would be students in grades nine, ninth and 10th grade students. They are currently in eighth and ninth, or, excuse me, they are currently in seventh and eighth grade. They'll be rezoned to the new campus. And for a sibling transfer, these are the ninth and 10th grade students, current students in seventh grade and eighth grade who have an older sibling in 11th or 12th grade. They are currently in grades eight, nine, excuse me, nine and 10, I'm sorry, may choose to attend their original high school rather than attend the high school designated by rezoning. So, I want to kind of share again, these are ninth grade students who are currently in grades seven and eight, who will have a sibling in 11th or 12th grade. They are currently in grades nine and 10, may choose to attend their original high school rather than attend the high school designated by the rezoning. With High School Number 12, there is no one-year early transfer. Bus transportation are eligible for two years, the 2017-18 school year and the 2018-19 school year. Their transfer fee would be waived, too, and the transfer deadline would be to be determined, it's one year from now. Thank you for sharing about student transfers.
Let's take a moment and see if there are any questions about these topics before we look at the actual boundary options. Any questions? I know it's a lot to absorb right now. Mr. Jackson?
And Mark, I don't know who you would like to address this one, Stuart's not here. With respect to academics, I know for my children, when they went through the district, certain classes were not available because there were insufficient students to make a class. And the definition of what it, of how many students it took to make a class varied by the subject itself. In addition, there were certain courses they wanted to take because they were closed, because the class already had a full complement, and there were insufficient students to make a second class, or we simply couldn't find another teacher to teach that. And so, have we looked at the dollars on this, and have we given any thought to how small of a class are we willing to create to accommodate advanced courses and particular course selections?
Two answers. Number one, no, we haven't put a pencil to the dollar cost, but yes, we have agreed, at least from an administrative standpoint, that there won't be a number of students required to make a class. If a student would like to take a class and we, and they qualify for that class, then we will offer that, so. But we have not put a pencil to that. We expect with option two, that it will cost a little bit more money, but the positives of that we view is that the majority of students that will be going to Cypress Park, it would not hurt. In fact, we think it would be beneficial to have a lower student-teacher ratio. So, we, yes, it would cost a little more money. I don't know the exact amount, but we view that as a positive. And as was said by Mary and others, every child that goes to Park will be offered every course that they could take anywhere else if they qualify for that.
Dr. Henry, we also have different opportunities right now for when a child is wanting to take a class and it's not offered at a campus because of the small enrollment. So, we now have opportunities with Adobe Connects, with distance learning, where we're able to provide students the courses, even though it's not offered right there at their campus.
I personally like, intellectually like, the concept of option two, particularly if we can, in fact, address the academic question and also if we can address the dollar question. Obviously, you know, in a school district, it's always a zero-sum game. So, if we put dollars here, it means that we aren't putting dollars someplace else, and that's always a question. And for the second question I have, and once again, this pertains to option two, where you're just opening it up with ninth graders, and this is actually what I asked many years ago when we used to have a Cracker Barrel, why couldn't we just open it ninth grade? So, I've liked the idea for a long time. But doesn't that mean that being able to have an orchestra, and I'll, I specifically mentioned that, I made a point of attending Cy Ridge's orchestra presentation, because the change in orchestra over the past 15 years has been dramatic, and I wanted to recognize that. But if we open a school with just ninth graders, we may not have enough instruments for that orchestra, and we may not have enough instruments for that band. And I presume that that's been addressed in some fashion?
You know, the specifics of that, I might ask Mary Running if she would like to address that, but I will go back to my original statement from a general standpoint to say that not one student that attends Cypress Park will suffer in any way, whether we start with ninth or ninth and 10th, but Mary can probably give some better.
We've talked about that some, but I think that if we open with just ninth grade, it's going to give those teachers an opportunity to do a lot of one-on-one instruction and really give those kids the attention that they will need to build those programs really quickly. We don't know what those numbers will be. We don't know if they'll be able to go to contest the first year, but we feel by the second year that we will be able to. But we're going to offer them other opportunities that may not be in the UIL realm, but in performance realms, things like that, other things.
So, let me repeat what I think I heard you say. Although there may not be, and you won't know until you have the students, you may have a full complement. Then again, you may have all trumpets and no trombones.
We don't know.
But you're, you are, in fact, actively thinking of means by which the experience can be enriched over what they might ordinarily experience in a different setting. Thank you.
Christine, Ms. Hart, Ms. Hartman?
Yes, I was looking at the projected enrollment, and I think it's really important to note on option one, the 2016-17 adjusted enrollment, if all ninth grade students moved early. You know, part of the reason we're opening new schools is to ease the burden on our other schools, and I'm looking that year at Ranch at 4,178, and, you know, I thought, oh, like, so, as Tom said, option two is looking very smart. My question, I guess, was, well, it wasn't a question, I guess I kind of figured it out as I read it, but I looked at, I was thinking about how you just said people with an older sibling, you know, starting would, for example, my point of reference is kids at Ranch. So, I have, you know, I know, like, if I have a child that's in ninth or 10th now, they'd be in 11th, 12th. The sibling that's in middle school right now would be able to start at Ranch, right, if I could provide transportation. So, I was looking at that and thinking any other high schools that might affect, and with option two, the enrollment going forward would definitely, I feel like, be able to fit in those kids if they wanted to, you know, go with their sibling. Is that correct?
Well, if you're ready, we can have Christie come up and talk about, you know, the differences in enrollment.
Oh, sorry, I totally skipped ahead.
We got a, we got a still. Have you gotten to that portion of the presentation yet?
Not yet, Christie.
Okay, sorry.
Poor Christie, she's walked up twice.
Poor me, sorry.
I've sent Christie back there.
Hey, I'm just, I'm just ahead of the game here, people.
We have a few more questions about just the basics that have been talked about, and then we'll go to the boundaries.
That's good, we're perfect with that.
It was the sibling part, part of the conversation that made me start thinking that way, sorry.
Dr. Olutry?
Well, this goes to the basics, but it does, I think, get into what the next presenter is going to present. The athletic people that presented tonight said that the, we're in 6A, is that right? And the cutoff for 6A is 2,200 students, 21?
2150.
2150. Well, and if we do option two, Cypress Park in the next snapshot of when it will, which will be taking place in 2018, will still be under that cutoff, whereas High School 12 will be over that cutoff. So... So I'm trying to see, how will that help us? Will that?
Our understanding of that is that any time that you're opening a school with limited grade levels, that there is a formula that's used to project for your enrollment. So when that formula is put in place and you start multiplying out what it would be with four grade levels, is that Cypress Park would be above the threshold for 6A participation with the given enrollment that it has.
Just to enter that exactly, if, if your snapshot data is for two grades, what the UIL does is take those two grades and double it. So if you had, I don't know what the number is, I'm not looking at, if it were 1,500, they would say they're projecting 3,000 students.
Okay, exactly.
And also, Dr. Ogletry, and clarify this for me, Mr. Cepeda, if a campus does come under that 6A mark, there is an option for the district for the, for a school to play, continue to play up into 6A. And that was actually the decision we made with Cypress Ranch. Cypress Ranch, in some of their initial early years, they had a low enrollment, and they, at that time, it was 5A, 4A. And we made a decision as a district for them to play up as a 5A team, although they did not meet that enrollment mark. So that was.
Exactly. You can opt out.
The other thing, I, I think it would help us if we would look at and get a presentation on the cost. If we've built a high school to, for a plus 3,000 population, and we only populate that high school for 11, 1200, 15, 1700 for three years, what, is, is there a negative cost factor? Or is, is the cost factor just built? And what we look at and what we go by is what it takes to staff and operate that, even though we don't maximize the whole full use of the building. And so any way we can get a look at that would, I think, would, would really help us.
All right, Mr. Kobe?
Just actually, without, number one, I love, option two, as far as I'm concerned, is an excellent option. I hate the thought that we would have one high school that would be separated into another district and be there for two years. So I think that is a negative, and I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at it. And I want to commend the administration for at least thinking outside of the box and not continuing to do everything that we always do all the time. So thank you very much for doing that and for taking a look at what's best for all the students. And I hope the community understands and hears that we do pay attention to what you're saying. We do listen to the input that you send to us. And although we may not agree with everything, there's a lot of times that you make us realize what we need to be looking at. So thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
That's really a good point, Bob. I like, I do like option two, where we just open with a ninth grade campus. And a lot of it is, a lot of the activities that the kids are in, a lot of those are also club activities as well, where a lot of them get noticed as far as outside of our programs for athletic reasons, for scholarships, for different things like that. But one in particular, football, is not. And there's just really not, quote, "club football" for good reason. And so if you, if you limit those athletes to just one year of varsity recognition, I think that, that hampers their ability to get scholarship money, because I can guarantee you, there's not a lot of football recruiters going to JV and freshman A and B games. They're mainly attending the varsity games. And the other thing is that if, if we had an athlete that's currently participating in a varsity level, that would have to move, because they'd be a 10th grader, that would have to move to Cypress Park, and then drop down to a JV level, that does not help that student at all. And I'm using that specifically for, for athletics, but I think you could use that for, and I think Ed might have, one of y'all said it, was talking about when you've got varsity football, you've got drill team, you've got band, you've got, you can go to any, any one of our games and see all the activities that the students are able to participate in with the various clubs and stuff. So this, and Bob, you hit the nail on the head, just doing something different is a great idea. And this will probably also address a lot of the feedback we got with parents saying, my child's going to be in ninth grade and already be cemented in to a fine arts program, to the FFA program, to, you know, auto tech, whatever it could be. And then under option one, we would pick them up and move them to a brand-new program. And, you know, when you're dealing with kids that are 14 and 15-year-olds, and they're at their, at their peak of their psychological development, sometimes those kids, it's very detrimental to pick them up and move at that age. And so I think that is a, that's a huge factor for me, especially if we can limit the number of moves that we have to make. I think that, and Mark, you said it, anything we can do to benefit the kids, if you take the adults out of the equation and you're benefiting the kids, that's huge. One specific question that I did have, and, and I might be answering my own question when, Ed, you said something about the student eligibility for varsity contests is not impacted when school districts change boundaries to facilitate the opening of new schools.
That's correct.
Then if we go over to, when we're talking about students that wanted to stay with siblings at a particular school, and they're freshmen coming in, but they've got older siblings, and they'd be a transfer student into that school that their, their siblings are in, would they, would they still have that waiver ability and still be able to compete varsity athletics?
The UIL would defer to us as a district of what we, what guidelines we submit to be for eligibility.
I would, I would, I would hope that as a board, that we would strongly consider that, especially if you have siblings that may have the opportunity to participate in an activity together. I know for parents, that would probably be a lot better than going to Cy Falls on Tuesday night, and then Langham on Tuesday night as well, if they, if they could participate, if they're good enough to participate at the varsity level. I would hope that as a board, we would make that adjustment, so we could make that adjustment in our policy, Ed.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. I would, I would personally like to see that.
Any other questions? Ms. Blackshear?
Just one comment. I too like the option two for Cypress Park, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Reading through the comments, parents that we received, I do have a concern about the financial impact on families for students that, say, for example, my granddaughter will go to Cy Ranch her ninth grade year, starting, Cy Ranch her ninth grade year, and then to high school number 12 her sophomore year. For some, that could be a problem like if they're in, for example, the agricultural program. The cost of, of a jacket they will have invested in that says Cy Ranch, and then they go to the new high school, and they have to re, you know, spend that money again for a new jacket. And it's just not that, from the comments I was reading, it was banned parents and all the different extracurricular activities. Have we, as a district, thought about how we're going to address that? Because I know for ACT students, when at their annual district ACT show, they must be in official dress. So that's a concern I have.
That, Ms. Blackshear, that has been an item that we have discussed, and, and I think Teresa and Linda were going to look at what we did, have done in the past. But, but I feel very confident in saying that no, no student would suffer financially. We would make sure as a district that we account for those relatively few situations that do occur.
The only piece I think we were going to investigate, and I don't think we've had a determination, was about UIL rules about possibly purchasing two jackets for students. If that was allowed by UIL, there's a certain limit, there's some rules there. But whatever we have control over as a district to eliminate those expenses for students and parents, we would certainly look for ways to avoid that.
Very good. Any other questions? Now I think we're ready to look at the bound, oh, Dr. Hendry.
Just, just a couple of comments, and because option two, and I know you're mulling it around in your mind, and the beauty of this is you have a couple of months before you have to make a decision, and I'm sure some people will point out some, is it one month? Oh, it is, it's one month, I apologize. It is December, isn't it? But, but there's still plenty of time for y'all to mull it over and people to give us more feedback. But option two, in my mind, there's, there's only a couple of negatives. One of them, Tom brought up, it will cost a little additional money. I think the advantages of that, again, are it's going to give us a lower student teacher ratio. So I think there is something that you're buying for that added expense. And plus, Mr. Hecker will build his staff a little slower than he would have, so that will save a little money from that standpoint. And the only other negative that I can come up with that is just the perception that you're doing something for one group that you're not doing for the other. But the reason you can do it, and I know you've seen this, so I'm just restating it because I want everyone to hear it, it, it goes back to UIL issues. In order to give high school 11 and 12 the same opportunities to what I call the Friday Night Experience, if you want to say that, and all of the kids that are involved, option two is the only one that we have on the table right now that will address that. And so that's why we have, it, it's just different when you open a high school in an even year and, as opposed to an odd year. So that's the reason for that. So I, that's, that's the only two negatives that I see.
Very good. Mr. Ryan?
Hey, Teresa, typically, what, how would, typically in the past, because I asked this last month about the ability to, for students to transfer, and this kind of nipped that in the bud. So obviously, under option two, it would be a huge relief on the administration side from the transfer department, I would think, would it not?
You would limit, there would be minimal transfers. The sibling transfers obviously would apply, but you wouldn't have that situation in 16-17 where we were going to allow those students to go a year early. And it also would eliminate that concern of overpopulating Cypress Ranch, potentially with the large number of students that would be eligible to transfer. But that is a part of our, the next part of our presentation. Christie has all those numbers for you to give you some picture about what that would look like.
I wanted to give you a bridge in that part. Y'all go ahead. That's all.
Thank you for that segment.
Christie, I think you can come up now.
And I apologize, I apologize, Christie. I gave her the stop sign twice.
Teresa has shared with you the two options that the boundary committee would like for you to consider. I'm going to review what we propose at the boundary, propose at the boundary workshop in November, and explain what that would look like in regards to option one and two, so where all the maps are involved, in other words. Also, weekly, we receive the input from the community about the proposed boundary changes. We've chosen several different threads, and after reviewing the options, I'm going to go over a few of those scenarios with you tonight. So, starting with the lovely maps. Okay, for the opening of two high schools, we have two phases. So in 16-17, we propose these changes in the southern region of the district, where all those red circles are, along with all the middle school changes. Now remember, on these maps, the dark blue lines represent the current boundary lines, and the colored areas represent the new attendance boundary lines. Okay? So for in this map, and this is the 16-17 map, in option one, okay, the 16-17 school year, Cy Park will open with ninth and 10th graders, I'm trying to double do it, y'all know where Cy Park is, is it making it over there? Yeah. And all the students in the red circle areas who will be in the ninth and 10th grade will go to their new rezoned schools. So that's option one. So Cy Park opens with ninth and 10th, and everybody in the red zones in ninth and 10th grade would be required to go to their new schools. For option two, for the 16-17 school year, Cy Park will open with ninth grade only. And for the red circled areas, only the incoming ninth graders, which are currently eighth graders, will be rezoned to the new school. Okay? And let me give you an example. So ninth grade students who are currently attending Cypress Falls High School, let me point to that area right there, find it, yeah, that, ninth graders that are currently attending that area right there, next year they'll be in 10th. They would be allowed to stay, okay? They would be allowed to, they would be allowed, yeah, they'd be allowed to stay at Cypress Falls. However, the current eighth graders that are going to be ninth graders, they would be rezoned to Langham Creek. Okay? So that's the difference between option one and option two. All right. This map is the proposed changes for the 17-18 school year when we open high school 12. Option one, for the 17-18 school year, high school 12 will open with ninth and 10th graders, and all students in the red circled areas who will be in the ninth and 10th grade will go to their new rezoned schools. Okay? As Mr. Schrempf mentioned earlier, in option one, students in the red circled areas that are involved in a boundary change in 17-18 school year and will be in the ninth grade for 16-17, they will have the option to attend their new school one year early, wherever you must provide your own transportation. So anyone in those areas right there would be allowed to go early in 16-17 with option one, but everybody else would have to go in their, in their, in their school year. So for example, in option one, if you're currently in eighth grade, and you live in one of the red circled areas, you know you will be rezoned in the 17-18 school year, you have the option to attend early in the ninth grade for the 16-17. In option two, for the 17-18 school year, high school 12 will open in ninth and 10th grade. And for the red circled areas, only the incoming ninth graders, the currently, that are currently seventh graders now, will be rezoned to the different school. For example, in the fall of 2017, if you're going to be in the ninth grader, a ninth grader in one of those red circled areas, these are the students who are currently seventh graders, you will be rezoned to the new school. If you're going to be in the 10th grader in the fall of 2017, you would be allowed to stay at your original campus. So only incoming ninth graders would be required to be rezoned for option two. And these are the proposed middle school changes that we presented to you in November. Option one and option two do not apply to the middle school options. These are only for high school. So all proposed middle school changes would occur at the beginning of the 16-17 school year, as we mentioned to you in November. And if you're in one of the red circled areas and are going to be in the eighth grade next year, you could stay, but you would have to provide your own transportation. So middle school, as far as it's not affected by option one and option two. All right? And then this map just reflects all of the original proposed boundary changes for both high school and middle school for the 16-17 and 17-18 school year. That was like the last map of the, of November presentation, shows the feeder patterns. All right? So let's look at numbers. And some of you have already looked at these, but if you look at option one, the 16-17 projected enrollment for option one, it's a Cy Park opens with nine and 10, and all schools in the southern part of the district that are affected by the change also send ninth and 10th graders to their rezoned campuses. So some of the schools aren't changing at all, okay, for 16-17. They're, they're, they're just the, the normal projections. Okay? And then the next column shows the possible adjusted totals if ninth grade students, and they're currently eighth grade students, that are involved in the 17-18 boundary change, if they were to take advantage of being able to attend the new school a year early, meaning the 16-17 school year, those totals are reflected in that column. Again, transportation wouldn't be provided. The bolded numbers are the campuses that students would be allowed to attend their new campus a year early. So as, as Ms. Hartley mentioned, you see Cy Ranch at 4,178, and that's approximately like 370. like 370 students that could take advantage of going early. Not saying that they all would, but if they all did, that would be the maximum if they all took advantage. And that's the only school that really would, you know, be, be tough. Okay? And then I want to go ahead and include option one enrollment projections. This, this is the same chart that you had from November. It just shows all five years. Again, the ninth grade going early is not reflected in those numbers. That's just the residents going when they're supposed to go. Okay, with option two, these are the enrollment projections. If we open Cypress Park with ninth grade only and have only incoming ninth graders be rezoned to their new campus. Okay? Notice, schools will not have as much immediate relief, but it allows students to stay where they started, with the exception of high school 12, and who are going to be opened to ninth and 10th, where those 10th graders would attend Cy Ranch their ninth grade year and then attend high school 12 their 10th grade year. All right? And I meant to put an asterisk by Cy Park. Cy Park on the 1617 school year, that is ninth only. This is ninth and 10th. And this is ninth, 10th, and 11th. So.
Kristi, just let me add a little, because Dr. O touched on it earlier. For Cypress Park, what, what the UIL would, would do is just either double the numbers or, you know, they would take our projections, because usually the districts have to provide projections, and then they'll, they'll do a formula on it. Because by 1920, you're, and you may have that on here somewhere, but it'll, it'll be up in the 6A range by the time they have seniors also. So, just go ahead.
And just so you know, at the last meeting, I gave you kind of ninth and 10th going in and out. I just, we just backed out those numbers and added them back to where they were in one and added them back to another. So those are those numbers and then projected for the next years. And the reason why I kind of colored in the 1617, those are the only ones that are changing in 1617, ninth only. These were still normal. And then if you see Falls kind of has a double change, they had a change in 1617 to Langham, and they had a change in 1718 to Ranch on the original proposed. Okay? And again, I wanted just to have this in your packet so you didn't have to revert back to November's packet. These are our projections for middle school through 2021, because I'll talk about some of the middle school changes or scenarios that the community has requested us to look at. Okay? Which brings us to our community input. We have approximately three weeks' worth of community input, and tonight I'd like to share with you four of the most common areas of interest. I want to go over these scenarios and, with you and kind of let you see the numbers, some things that you've requested, and then some things that the community has had, again, a large amount of input regarding the same suggestion. Okay? Let's talk about middle schools first. Mr. Ryan, at the last board meeting, you had requested for us to consider Enchanted Valley Estates in some areas right around Enchanted Valley Estates to be included with just the original Enchanted Valley. Before I show you the numbers, let me kind of show you the areas we're talking about. This right here is Enchanted Valley, and then the line was kind of this bottom yellow line. The new yellow area is what we proposed to add to that section. Originally, they are at Hamilton. We moved some kids from Spillane, from Arnold to Spillane, and so we wanted to move some of the kids from Hamilton to Arnold. So these white areas, there's this, this number right here, let me look at my map. It's zoomed in because I can't see the number, is 2069, a commercial area. This is 2059, also a commercial area. However, there is one trailer on there and one student. And then this area right here is called Park Forest Trail, and then this part right here is Enchanted Valley Estates. So when we took those four RES codes and, and looked at the numbers, as you can see, there are not that many students, 17 total students, with, you know, one of the, one of the commercial areas has zero, the other one has the one, and then there's 12 and three. So 17 total students. And you can see Arnold and Hamilton are pretty much as close to even as you can get. I think this is something that the community is, has been wanting in the feedback. It keeps all of Enchanted Valley together at Arnold Middle School. And our committee that has discussed this option, and we feel that we would like to move forward and add this to the middle school proposed boundary changes for 1617. We do like the suggestion from the community, and we would like to add that to our boundary proposal. This is Cypress Mill Park 2. We've received a lot of input regarding this. And let me kind of, let me put you where, where, we didn't put the streets in everybody. This is Cypress Rose Hill Road right here, and then this is Skinner, right? Cypress Mill Estates is right here, again, behind like Alicia's, and then Cypress Mill Original is right up here. Across the street is Cypress Mill Park 2. They're currently both, all of Cypress Mill is currently at Spillane. Okay? We, again, we've taken from Goodson, we've taken from Spillane, so now we're going to add some back to Goodson because Goodson can use the, the numbers. And so if you recall, and I can go back to one of the other maps, you have them there, the middle school map. We, we went over here is Mushkee. We took everything to the right of Mushkee up to Cypress Rose Hill and moved it to Goodson. Okay? In the, in the original proposed. And what Cypress Mill Park 2 would like to be included with their other Cypress Mill, you know, neighbors across the street. With that being said, there is a larger number of students in this area, and again, we wanted to kind of give some students back to Goodson. So let me go ahead and show those numbers if we were to move. It, it really makes it a little uneven when it comes to Goodson and Spillane. So Cypress Mill east of Cypress Rose Hill, which is Cypress Mill Park 2, there's 108 sixth through eighth graders. And so it, it really makes it lopsided when you, when you take those students and add them back to Goodson and take them away from Spillane. So we, and we feel it makes Goodson overpopulated. And we've even looked at Goodson's projections, and, you know, they are, they do go up every year, not that much, but then again, in 2020, they're up even more. So another expected growth. So we felt that this is not a good suggestion for changing this area, even though the neighborhoods, there is a dividing line of Cypress Rose Hill. It's, it creates an imbalance between Spillane and Goodson, and we felt that Goodson could use those students since we pulled, you'll see in a second, from Stone Gate to go to Spillane. And both of these two.
Kristi? What's, what's the dividing line between the Cypress Mill Park and Cypress Mill Park East? Or however they're?
Cypress Rose Hill, it is right here. So, so if, right above Cypress Mill Park, right, actually, right here, this is the line, I'm sorry, right above Cypress Mill Park 2 is the line that currently, they all go to Spillane. Okay?
Above that.
And then right above that, we're Sydney Harbor, and to the left, they all go to Goodson. So.
So right above Cypress Mill Park East is, is the other part of Cypress Mill Park, is what you're saying?
This, this right here is original Cypress Mill. This is called Cypress Mill Park 2.
Okay. Okay. So the dividing line is Cypress Rose Hill.
Yes, sir.
So you have a fairly clear dividing line, is my point?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it was consistent with, it was consistent with what we did to realign this section over here that you can't see, if it's on your other map, that we are now sending to Woods. And so these two groups meet up at, in high school. So it's just the middle school that they would, and these, this, the group actually originally went to Goodson, then they all went to Spillane, and now we're kind of having them realigned to be aligned with what we did with the high school.
Kristi, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Don.
It's okay.
I was going to say, how many, wait, Bob, one more.
I'm having trouble wrapping my brain around where Goodson is. Tell me where.
Okay, let me go back to the middle school map. Okay?
I know where Goodson is. I'm just trying to.
Oh, to where it is on that map?
Yeah.
Okay. I will. Goodson is right up here. Where the name is. How about Goodson? Here's Skinner. Skinner's going to go up, and Huffmeister's going to be this way.
Looks up here?
Yes. Skinner goes up here, Huffmeister goes this way, and it's right where the name Goodson is. How about that?
All right. I hate it mixed up with another subdivision.
It's okay. And then here's like Queens Lake, and you go straight, and you take a ride on, drive us and come over here to Spillane.
Okay. Go ahead, Don. I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, how many students are in the, you got 223 here, but in the original Cypress, Cypress Mill.
Say it again?
Excuse me. I'm so sorry.
I didn't, I was, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan, I didn't hear your question.
On that area that's not on the map to the left, that's the, I guess, the original Cypress Mill Park, how many students are in that area? I didn't bring last month's packet, so I apologize.
Ms. Cooper says 153. I have mine here. Hold on.
Okay. Okay.
So Kristi, this doesn't really, upon investigation, this does not go the way the community input has asked it to be changed. Because of the, of the greater enrollment at Goodson.
The input has been they would like for Cypress Mill, Cypress Mill Park and Cypress Mill Estates to stay together, whether they all go to Spillane or they all go to Goodson. We wanted to populate Goodson. They were below Spillane, and by doing this, it, it makes Goodson and Spillane more balanced. And Goodson has, again, it was, we were trying to be consistent with the, the change in there for going to Cy Woods, and they'll both meet up at Cy Woods.
Right. I just, I just want to make sure we all understand.
Right. Okay. Okay, now we have two high school scenarios that we'd like to go over. This has been, according to, I think, Blanca and several others, I think we frequently have a request from a community, a small community called Windcrest Falls, Windcrest Falls over here. The, the community concern is, it's that, we received the feedback from that one area, but the underlying is they go to Hamilton Elementary, Hamilton Middle, and then they go to Cypress Creek High School. The request is that this area, or Windcrest Falls, goes to Cy Fair instead of Cy Creek. So with that argument, we, we took any school that had that exact same pattern of Hamilton Elementary, Hamilton Middle, and Cypress Creek. And we felt that if we were to consider just that one, Windcrest, that we needed to consider all of those areas. And so that included, you know, there's some commercial areas, and the numbers aren't large. But again, if you remember, our goal was to relieve Cy Fair. And so these numbers aren't very large, but again, and where they're located in the district, they've been, there's one student in Windcrest Falls, and that is the only area that is making this request. So let me fast forward to the numbers here. So you see all of these subdivisions or areas have that exact same pattern of Hamilton Elementary, Hamilton Middle, and then Cypress Creek, with Windcrest Falls being the only one making the suggestion. So we went ahead and said if we did that one, we'd have to do all of them. And I know the numbers aren't very large, but again, our purpose was to relieve Cy Fair, and that was not a suggestion that the committee feels makes, is, is, you know, something that we would like to make that suggestion. So that is the first high school scenario. Any questions on that one? Okay. Okay? Now, this, unlike the other areas where we've been asked to change the lines, I say, the area, this area is requested to be rezoned to a different school. For the November 16th meeting, we proposed that this area move from Falls to Ranch for the 1718 school year. We received several requests to consider moving this area to Langham Creek instead of Ranch. So I'm going to show these numbers to you. You have the numbers from the last, and I can, can I, I'm going to go over them a little bit, but if you remember, Falls has students moving in, in either option 1617 and in 1718. And pending option one or two, even though I hear it over with responsive option two, with the complexity of Falls being involved in boundary changes in both 1617 and 1718, and with option one and option two, I would like to examine the numbers further, especially more long-term effects of making this change to Langham Creek, with the effects of both Langham Creek and Cy Ranch. And if I find that the projected numbers I have change, I will email you my findings. It's too hard to, and I, and I spoke with Pasa today, but there's, when you talk about 1617 with each school and each option and what happens, and then you look at 1718 with each school and each option, and when they could go and when they couldn't go due to Ranch's high numbers, it really, it, it creates about four or five different scenarios, and I'd like to be able to check those numbers. And if I see that my numbers have changed, then I will email you those results. But right now, these are the numbers that are currently in those RES codes or projected in those RES codes. And let's just pretend that, you know, if Cy Falls in 1617 were to lose all of those students, you know, this would be their enrollment, which has immediate relief for Falls. If Langham Creek were to take them all in 1617, that would be their numbers. But again, and then Cypress Ranch, that has, has, they would not lose them until 1718. However, ninth graders could go early. So then there's, there's just different scenarios that I'd like to examine a little further. And then if their numbers that I have, you know, drastically change, I would like to email you those findings. So I just wanted to provide with you the, the numbers of those residents and to share with you that there has been a request to consider moving those students to Langham Creek instead of Cypress Ranch.
Kristi, I appreciate that you're going to wait. Are those, are those RES codes built out?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? No? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Ryan. And thank you all. I think that was a very thorough presentation. I really appreciate the fact, all the work that's been done on the comments. There were a number of comments, and I appreciate that they were being evaluated and discussed, and other options were presented. That ends our board discussion. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented on Monday evening. Is there a need for a closed session? All right. All right. I want to remind everyone that we're at the Berry Center on Monday, and we look forward to seeing you. But if there are no further issues, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. But if there are no further issues, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.